I'd like to call this meeting of your North City Council order. Auto please call the order.
Mr. Rat.
Here.
Mr. Blake.
Here.
Mr. Bub.
Here.
Mr. Cos.
Here.
Mr. Fennell.
Here.
Mr. Fraser.
Here.
Ms. Hall.
Here.
Mr. Labutis.
Here.
Mr. Lang.
Here.
And Mr. Marmy.
All seven o'clock, so you're out here.
We have all here this evening. If you please rise for the invocation.
Mr. Labutis, follow by the pledge of allegiance.
Enjoy your prayer. Heavenly Father, as we come in prayer this evening, we thank you for the beautiful day which you've given us, and it's time that we could come together to discuss the plans for the city and to honor some folks as well. I ask that you be with our time this evening and give us your insight and wisdom into how you would have the city run, and bless the leadership in the city as well. It's been a wonderful time this evening, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Labutis. Next on the agenda this evening, we have caucus. That's the time for council. We'll discuss anything pertaining to the agenda tonight. Do we have anything?
Mr. President.
Mr. Rat.
I intend to take 1816 off the table during this lenient comment.
Thank you, Mr. Rat. Do we have anything else? Mr. Bub.
Yes, I will abstain from the conversation or voting that pertains to ordinance 18-16.
Anything else on caucus? Okay. We'll move to our minutes of the September 17, 2018 meeting. Is there motion to approve that?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Labutis.
The second.
Second by Mr. Fraser. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If you oppose, same sign. That passes, thank you. We have one appointment this evening. Mayor Hall reappointing Sue Spiker, Mark Modder, and Candy Engel to the Edna Corporate Park Joint Economic Development Zone Two, JET Two Board. Their new term will begin, will be two years, and will begin August, October 20, 2018, and end October 18, 2020. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. That passes, thank you. Next, we have reports of standing committees. We have three this evening, one from finance, one from service, and one from capital improvements. Without objection, those will be received and filed. Next, under reports from city officials, we have two this evening. First one is Fairway Estate Sewer Assessment Equalization Board. The recommendation of North City Council, that letter is in your packet. We need to vote to approve that. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Abstain.
Thank you, Mr. Bub. We have nine yes and one abstain. Also from Barb Jobb, the city tax administrator, we have the income tax reports for the period ending September 15, 2018. Without objection, those will be received and filed. Under communications, first this evening, we have Mayor Hall, who will be presenting certificates to Fort Lincoln County 2018 Special Olympics USA Games athletes. Mayor Hall.
Thank you. Just a few words before we do the presentation. Special Olympics is a global movement that transforms lives through the power and joy of sports every day around the world. Using sports as a catalyst and programming around health and education, Special Olympics is fighting inactivity, injustice, and tolerance. Founded in 1968, the Special Olympics movement has grown to more than 5.7 million athletes, which makes it just a phenomenal number and wonderful, and unified partners across 172 countries. With the support of more than 1 million coaches and volunteers, Special Olympics delivers 32 Olympic-type sports and over 108,000 games and competitions throughout the year. In the United States, over 700,000 athletes and unified partners from 52 state programs participate in sports offered at the national, regional, state, local, and area levels. This year's games, 2018, were held July 1 through July 6 out near Seattle, Washington, and of course around, as they take several venues. They competed in 14 sports at venues all across Puget Sound. There were 4,000 athletes and coaches, 10,000 volunteers, 10,000 family members, and more than 70,000 spectators. We are blessed here tonight in so many ways that we have four medal winners from Lincoln County that traveled to the West Coast and earned those medals and brought them back to us. I bet it was only fitting that we recognized them here this evening. First, I'd like Ian Bussey to go ahead and get up there. Obviously, he's wearing them very proudly. This is very nice. Certificate awarded to Lincoln County Special Olympian Ian Bussey, outstanding performance 2018 Special Olympics USA Games, Seattle, Washington, July of 2018. In the 100-meter day, he got the gold medal. In the 200-meter day, he got the gold medal. In the 4x100-meter relay, he got the gold medal too on the team.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Stand right over here a minute, and we'll get all four of you together. If we can get Ollie Riddick up here, please. She's proudly wearing her medal, also. It is Ollie, right?
Yes.
Okay. Lincoln County Special Olympian Ollie Riddick, certificate awarded for outstanding performance 2018 Special Olympic USA Games, Seattle, Washington. And in women's powerlifting, she won three gold medals. And briefly tell us how much weight you lifted. You were telling me earlier.
341 deadlifts and 155 bench press.
341 deadlifts, that's phenomenal. Ollie, congratulations. Good. If you could just stand right over here, please. Next, Bryce Hartley, please join. Certificate awarded to Lincoln County Special Olympian Bryce Hartley, outstanding performance at the 2018 Special Olympics USA Games, Seattle, Washington, July 2018. Men's singles tennis gold medal and men's double tennis bronze medal. Congratulations, Bryce. Very good. And finally, we've got Garrett Ford here. Certificate awarded to Lincoln County Special Olympian Garrett Ford, outstanding performance 2018 Special Olympics USA Games, Seattle, Washington, July of 2018. Men's powerlifting, three gold medals. Share your weight with us, maybe, under the powerlifting.
My deadlift is actually 500, and my bench press is 300.
That is phenomenal. Wonderful. Congratulations. Well, Carrie, you want to join us if you'd like to? And maybe if you both, sure, absolutely. She was a little shy earlier.
Yeah, oh, she's kind of.
Come on, I got her. There we go. And you guys have a lot to do with these Special Olympians right here, and kind of maybe share the local experience with us just a little bit.
Sure. Let me go first, Vicki. Sure. All right, I'm Carrie Lysak, I'm the coordinator for Lincoln County. And of course, Vicki, owner of this is West Lincoln. As you all know, Lincoln County being a nice rectangle, we discovered we have enough athletes to share between the two of us. Lincoln County, our chapter has been around since 1990. I've been coordinator for four years. It's all volunteer. So everything we do in our organization, we raise funding and get our volunteers through local schools and civic organizations. So for the past five years, we started powerlifting, and Garrett and Ollie came to us. Ollie was very nervous about the weights at first and said, "There's just no way I'll be able to do that." And I told her, "I'm a powerlifter," and I once told her I could deadlift 300, and she goes, "Oh, I will never be able to do that." And she has far surpassed me in her deadlifting ability. I give up trying to catch her at this point. And Garrett came to us when he was 16, and I love to tell the story that his arms were as skinny as about this round. And as you can see, that is not the case anymore. And likewise, you know, at the time, a little guy at 16 was a bit nervous as well about lifting weights. And over the past five years, he has just, both of them have just blown us away with their talent. And so to be able to be selected as two of the only powerlifters in the state to go, and I think it's incredibly important to mention that both of them have excelled so much in their powerlifting, but Garrett was selected to go to the World Games this March. He's representing Ohio. Not only Lincoln County, but he's representing one of the only powerlifters in the entire state of Ohio. Ohio, State of Ohio Special Olympics is paying for him to go, the whole thing. He trained in Delaware University last week, right? For a whole week. He did training, and he'll be going to Abu Dhabi in United Emirates in March to compete for the world. So be watching.
Yeah, don't hold that up. Is that right? And then certainly tennis and certainly track has done well for him.
Absolutely, absolutely.
We offer just a variety here.
Yeah, and Vicki, take care. We both have track programs. We're two athletes.
We do. We serve the western part of the county, as Carrie mentioned. I've been the coordinator for, I think, about seven or eight years now. And we've been existence for 16 years, I believe. 15 years, we started 15 years ago because our kids couldn't get to newer, to practice us there. So we're a private organization. We do all of our own fundraising. We are all volunteer, as Carrie said. We serve over 100 athletes. And our two guys, Bryce and Ian, excelled in the World Games, or in the USA Games in track and tennis, but they are star basketball players, too. The school age team that they were on has played three times in the last four years for the state championship in basketball. So these kids excel. It gives them a social life as well. Once they're out of school, they lose some of that connection. So we're proud to do it. It's very rewarding. If you have any extra time and ever want to be a volunteer, contact Carrie or me. We'll put you to work, and you will love working with these kids. They're awesome.
Let me squeeze right between you, and get me a picture that you can shoot to me, please.
That works, where's the lighters?
Thank you. Congratulations, everyone. Thanks for coming, thanks for your families. You don't have to stay if you guys want to go now. You can go.
Thank you. Thank you.
Don't have to tell them one time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He could probably do it in the GFC Hops. He's in 500, so you can do it at least once.
There's a motion for the board to deadlift Fraser. Is that a second?
Second. I'm not afraid to get that.
Next, under communications from the Division of Liquor Control, we have a new application for a liquor license at 37 North Third Street Gallery of Dreams. Without objection, that'll be received and filed. Next on our agenda, we have comments from citizens. There are two places for comments from citizens. One is now, and one is after the legislation. Again, this is not a debate with council. This is just your opportunity to be heard. Do we have anyone for this first section of comments from citizens? This gentleman right back here.
Hey, how you guys doing today?
Great, great, great.
Give us your name and address for the record, if you want.
My name's John Sweeney. My address, 727 Garfield Avenue, Newark, Ohio. Hey, I was in here last time, and I had a cockroach problem. Still got it going on. I want the city to change the laws. I called this in at the end of July. We're in October 1 now. I have acquired a bill, as of now, close to $6,000. I have to power wash the house, I have to take all the soil around the house, and I have to take up all the gravel around the house. That'll have to be done before winter hits. That's irrelevant while I'm talking. When the house was exterminated, and whatever the laws is of Newark, they allowed them to go in with the minimum amount. They went in and sprayed the house and the outside foundation. They did not put any traps outside. This is one of the worst devastations ever in Newark, Ohio. There was a minimum of 1 million cockroaches. And hey, how do I know that? I will tell you how I know that. After I sprayed for a month and a half, $600 of my money out of the pocket and all my labor, I said something in right here. Why am I buying the best stuff and I'm not getting nowhere spraying? And then I decided I'll come out an hour after dark and see what's going on. Six weeks later, this is six weeks after July 17, when I went out that night, I couldn't believe with my eyes what I saw. The whole yard was completely covered with cockroaches. So was the White House, that 96 Wilson Street, it's Steve Enlow, the owner, property owner. I've been dealing with this guy for over 20 years, that he has messed my property up. I've had to close my house down and not make money for, oh, I would say, close to a two-year period, probably 10 years ago. You can get in on the utilities and see when there was no utilities being used, and see how long it was shut down because of this. I cannot afford what has went on. The laws of Newark and the Health Department have to be changed. If the men don't want to come out at nighttime to inspect for cockroaches on the building, then you need to find new employees. But hey, when I found out that the people that sprayed the house two times admitted to me that the owner does not want to spend no money and put traps for allowing the contamination to come over on my property now, it's been over two months. And hey, I invite you guys down there tonight, and let's see what we get in pictures, because I'm headed there after I'm done here tonight. I want the laws of the Health Department, or whatever department, because hey, here's why. I don't know whose department it is. I was led on a wild goose chase at the end of July 17. I called several departments up. My feedback was if I didn't shut up, I was going to jail. And hey, I'm here today to state my claim. Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Thank you. Chad Brown, Director of Environmental Health at the County Health Department. We have limited ability to handle these issues. The board passed a resolution that says occupied structures should be free, must be free of insects, rodents. This structure is unoccupied at this time. We have issued an order. There was accumulation of trash there as well. That's been taken care of and taken out. They couldn't treat the inside of the house, so they got all the trash out of it. So they did that. Like I said, we have limited ability. I did talk to the exterminator as well. I've talked to him several times. Basically, you know, he has what's called a pesticide applicator's license. I own one as well. He has to spray and treat the house in accordance with the law. And you know, we're always taught the label is the law. So label the pesticide, he has to treat in accordance with that. If not, he violates his license and he goes out of business. So he treated there on September 14, and he is due back in four weeks from that date to do that. Like I said, this structure is unoccupied, so therefore, we have limited authority. And I agree with the gentleman that spoke that we do have limited authority at this point. I'm not sure what the, I don't know your property maintenance code, because I don't enforce it, but I'm not sure what authority they would have, that they would have more authority than we would. That's what has happened. That's what we've talked about. We've been working on this thing. I agree. I don't live next to it. If I did, I'd be upset as well. But, and we're just working towards it to try to come to a good resolution. In talking to the exterminator, he told me in his experience with an infestation as bad as it was, we're probably looking at 68 weeks to fully remediate it. As far as inspectors not coming out at night, number one, it's a safety issue for our staff to be out at night by themselves. You know, we had an incident several years ago, one of our employees was shot, you know, spraying for mosquitoes in the city. So that's a safety issue. If we could work something out, you know, occasionally, maybe we could do something there. I'm open and flexible on anything. I'll work with anyone. We'll do our best to make it work. But, you know, it's just a safety issue for our folks to be out after night by themselves. But we're generally not welcomed in the places that we go. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you guys may have.
Okay. We'll just, we'll just go ahead and through this, if you want, just go ahead and see. Yeah, sure. Thank you. Gentleman back there in the gray shirt, next. I thought that wasn't a high.
Thanks for your time, council. Name's Dustin Livingston. I've lived at 102. It's a duplex house. I live downstairs. I've been there for 10 years.
That would be 102 Wilson Street.
Exactly, sir. And I've been there 10 years, never had a problem. I know there was a problem before that, and you had to eradicate it for almost two years before I moved in because of the situation. And never had no problem after that, but I have notified the city numerous times in the last three years about trash in the yard, different occupants, trash in the yard, the yard being this tall and cutting the grass. If you, if you come to my, my house is manicured. But anyway, like I said, I've been there 10 years. They're not checking the property. The property management for Steve Enlow, I forget the name, she can tell you here in a minute, but it's not checking the properties. They, the property still has roaches. The water department was there last Thursday. I'm home all the time. I'm on disability. I have COPD. I'm having trouble breathing right now. The water department was there last Thursday. They have not even been there to check the door sticker that's on the door. It's still there today. He was there last night. Yesterday morning, there was a girl, there was a homeless person in the backyard wrapped in a blanket. I'm sorry, I live across the street from good places and bad places, but there's homeless shelter across the street. This, this girl is a heroin addict. It's not good. It's been over eight weeks. I still see him in my house. And we got, we've done everything imaginable. It's crazy why the city can't, or make them do something. It don't make sense. It really don't. Thank you for your talk.
Thank you. Ma'am? One of you two? One, either, yeah. Yes.
This is going to be a hard act to follow.
Actually, we have, we have one more on that. We'll just do one more on Wilson Street, and then you can go. How's that?
Okay.
Ma'am, you want to go ahead and go?
Sir.
I don't believe you. I was answering, thank you.
My name's Elizabeth Livingston. I live at 102 and a half Wilson Street, Newark, Ohio. And I am here to inform the city council that there are, there is still a continued infestation of roaches occurring at 96 Wilson Street. The Lincoln County Health Department did do an inspection on the home on September 11. Mohammed, the inspector from the Health Department, stated that all of the insects are dead. However, they are not. I have photographs of live insects at the location for the last two to three weeks. And I have submitted a proposal for an ordinance to protect neighboring properties from a home or business found to have an infestation, and a link showing a slideshow of the last two to three weeks of the infestation to Mr. Blake. I'm just asking that you please review the proposal, and I hope that the Newark City Council will implement an ordinance to protect citizens from such occurrences. Please know that the infestation that Steve Enlow has allowed to happen at the 96 Wilson property has tremendously affected the quality of my life and that of my family in a very negative manner. And I thank you for your time and for listening to me, and have a good evening.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Okay. I think I'm actually grateful I have the problem I have and not theirs. Good evening to all of you. My name is Christine Chaconis. I live at 242 Pearson Boulevard. And I don't know if the younger people here know that that used to be the city limits, the middle of the street. My house was in the township. And I have lived there since I was, off and on, since I was four months old. It was, it's the house I grew up in. It's an old neighborhood. Houses aren't very big, and has become a tremendous cut through. And I am so grateful that our community has gained the nice things that are on 21st Street. I'm the first one in all of them. I am delighted to have them within walking distance. However, we've got a really serious problem, and I know that it isn't exclusive to my street. The speeding and the, the amount of traffic is just not to be believed. And I know that the people who don't live on my street think, "Oh, well, that's okay. Traffic's good." No, it's not, because the amount we're getting, I mean, you can, there are times of the day that you can go into this, you know, residential neighborhood, look at the street, there's as many as nine to 12 cars moving all the time, all the time. And they are going incredibly fast. And I am not the only person who lives there who is upset about this. I could have probably brought a whole bunch of them with me, but that really didn't look like a good idea, so. I guess, and I've spoken with, with Doug Marmy, who was kind enough to sit in advisement and straighten me out and get me, you know, on the right path to getting help for this. But no matter what, I am begging for help, because it is just unbelievable. We have people passing each other. I mean, if you go 25, you can watch the guy behind you jockeying around, trying to, you know, he's thinking about. And it's only a matter of time till they're really serious accident. People, if you try to turn into your driveway and turn your turn signal on, they try to go, like, if I'm turning left, they're going around the left side swearing at me, flipping me off, you know, acting like idiots. And like I told Doug, you can't fix stupid, and you can't fix crazy. But I'm old, and I grew up in a time that this kind of behavior wasn't necessary. And I'm impatient about it. I, it just really makes me angry to think that these people have taken over my street. And I, I know that it's good to have the things that are drawing up and down my street. I understand that. And Doug and I spoke about a traffic light or another stop sign, and I, you know, my parents lived there when the crazy old fool that took the stop sign out and went through all that. Okay, they took that stop sign out. Now the stop signs don't even stop them. The number of times I have continued west on my street, which is just about every day, and somebody pulls up on Grafton Road, and instead of doing what all of us were taught to do, you stop, you let the main street go by, oh, no, they shoot right out in front of you. They, they just absolutely don't have any sense. We were paved a year ago. Street's much nicer now. Previous to that, it was like living on a minefield in a third world country, because the guys with, you know, dragging trailers with lawn mowers and stuff would barrel through there, and you can't even imagine the amount of noise. It was unbelievable. Well, now that noise is abated. When they had the street, co-cosing was absolutely wonderful to all of us. They, they really went out of their way to make sure we could get out of our driveways and that we knew what they were going to do and when. As soon as they cut in front of your driveway and made a drop-off, as soon as that was possible, they were back putting a temporary pad in there. I was really impressed. And you could ask them all kinds of questions, and they were so patient and so nice. But one day, when it was, it was in the summer, and the sewer lid things were sticking up about so high, and there were several, and the street was down to the dirt and gravel. My neighbor and I are out there, and we look, and you know, there was practically no traffic. Nobody wanted to navigate the street the way it was. Here come two idiots in a hot Mustang, new one, and they're doing this around the sewer lids. Speeding, speeding. She and I are just going, "Are you kidding me? What is wrong with people?" But we all know we can't fix how other people drive. We're fortunate if, you know, I think I'm a superb driver. I do a really good job, and that's because my dad, Bill New, put me through all kinds of stuff. But I just, I don't get it, but I also don't understand the speeding. I don't understand why everybody thinks it's okay to go that fast. It's like, have another Red Bull, stupid. I mean, you know, really? It just is so annoying. And I know that the rest of the people on my street are just... And the other thing about this is, that I will tell you, it is, it is affecting our property value. There's no doubt about it. When houses along there are for sale, when people observe or see the traffic and how fast it's going, how much there is, they go look at another house. They, they, you know, it is not good. And I know you're a realtor, and probably have heard these things about other neighborhoods. But I beg you and, and implore you to please think of something, or get the police department on board. Um... department on board, um, because we've got trouble. And please don't bring that digital thing back. That digital thing is just, oh, good, there's no cops, you know? They know. Some of them go fast past it just to see if they can run the numbers up like a, a pitching machine. It's, yeah, I'm not, I wish I were kidding. So, you know, that thing is not, that's a Band-Aid on a surgical wound. It doesn't help. And it doesn't, or, or they put it clear up by Mount Vernon Road where people have traveled 50 feet. They're just starting at that point. By the time they get near my house, they're ready to roll. So, you know, and motorcycles, oh, those are delightful. Yeah, those are really good. But they all just view it as a place where they can make time and get to where they're going fast. And, you know, I'm really, I'm really kind of afraid to go out front and do lawn work or work and do anything, you know, towards the street. Because so many of them have a phone in their ear, which I realize, we can't help that. We can't fix that. If they're going that fast and they've got a phone in their ear, you don't want to be standing out there. If I had children, I wouldn't even live in this neighborhood anymore. I really wouldn't. And, and of course, and the other thing that happens is, we don't have sidewalks, as you all know. But there are people that walk down our street to come to work on 21st Street from the other end, and there are people trying to walk dogs or have a stroller, and they're just, you know, sitting ducks. And a lot of times, people don't slow down for them either. The yards are lumpy, they can't really navigate well in those. And I'm not asking, I don't want sidewalks, but this, these problems are all kind of tied together. So I thank you all for your patience. I thank you for listening. And I know with this many smart people, we're going to come up with something, and I'll be glad to do whatever I can do to help. If you still have the thing that we clock people with so I don't have to stand out there with my hair dryer, that would be good. And I will.
Does that work?
I'm going to find out. I just, you know, we need, the one thing we do need is, we've only got a, a speed sign, you know, either end. And it probably wouldn't hurt to have a couple more in between. Most of the people that you see speeding or you say something to them, they'll say, oh, I thought it was 35 through there. The other thing we've got is, we've got a lot of trucks going up and down through there that I think are too big to be on that street. Not semis. We have all the guys that do tow work, was it Speedies, Jays, all of them fly through there. Some of the, there's business trucks that go through there all the time going too fast. And, um, that's nerve-wracking, too. So, thank you all so much.
Thank you.
And thank you. I'm so glad I was here for the, the awards they gave. That is such an uplifting...
That's pretty.
Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Alicia Farias, 116 Smithview Drive, Madison Township. Um, three quick things. I wanted to thank the mayor and the mayor's office for recognizing the athletes and their families and their coaches tonight. That was really remarkable and special thing, and it means a lot to those folks. Um, I also want to thank David Rhodes for his work to get the water fountains functioning on the square. Um, I think, you know, the other issue that we're going to be facing is 24/7 access to a bathroom because we have such a surge in homelessness right now. Um, I also want to recognize Doug Sasson and the prosecutor for the meeting to talk about the issue with the people that are experiencing homelessness right now. So hopefully we'll have some good solutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Hang on, hang on.
I'll make this quick. Uh, Dave McElfresh, 153 North 39th Street, Norck, President of Norck Firefighters, Local 109. Uh, again, I want to, I missed the last meeting. I was working. I would have brought this up then, but, uh, we're very grateful, uh, the purchase of this new ladder that's being discussed. Uh, it would just not be in my character not to have concern with the fact that we're using personnel money to purchase it. I was kind of outraged a couple of years ago, or last year, I believe, when they used personnel money for HVAC at the police department when we're, we're begging for personnel. And, uh, a, a big portion of, of the fund from the fire department's budget, not the capital improvements, uh, came out of the personnel budget. So I just wanted to share my concern with that, to be consistent. When we need people, we shouldn't be spending personnel funds on apparatus. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Gentlemen in a green shirt first. Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait, wait.
Oh, in the green? I'm sorry.
He was, he was waving back there about six times. Now, you understand this is not a debate. If you have something else to add, I appreciate you.
The only thing I wanted to add was, uh, that, that I talked to a couple exterminators, and they told me plain as day that the people that own the house could have came back in and put stuff into the yard and also set plenty of trap bates outside in order to keep the infestation. When you spray a house and you shut the doors up and there's no food and water, they're all going to come out running. And hey, it'd be all right if it lasted for two weeks. I could laugh about it. But when it gets over two months and it gets into my pocket, so far, I'm riding, I'm riding in over a year's rent that I have lost now because I live in the city of Norck and I own property in the city of Norck. And hey, it's got to stop because if it happens next year the same way, it, it won't go down this way. But anyway, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Dustin Livingston, 102 Wilson Street. Thank you again, council. Not to shoot the lady down that was just here talking about the water fountains being turned on on the square, which is really good thing. The square, it's beautiful. I love it. I've been here 60 years almost. Alls it did, though, was give heroin addicts water to shoot up with. That's all I got to say, brother. That's all it did. And that's why we got a homeless problem down on the square. Laying on the benches, I go around it all the time looking. There's people, and I got heroin addicts in my alley. Look around, guys.
Thank you.
It is.
Okay, we're going to go, ordinance is on the first reading, 18-33.
Ordinance 18-33 by Mr. Rath, Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Labutus, and Mr. Frazier. An ordinance annexing certain territory generally described as being .576 acres, more or less, located in Norck Township to the city of Norck, Ohio.
18-33 will be held for our second reading in two weeks. Next, we have on the second reading, 18-74.
Resolution 18-74 by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Cost, Mr. Rath, Mr. Labutus, Mr. Lang, and Mr. Frazier. A resolution authorizing the Director of Public Service to repair and submit applications to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement Program and to execute contracts as required.
You've heard the second reading of 18-74. What is your wish, Mr. President? Mr. Marmee?
I have a highlight on this.
Yeah, I make a motion to adopt Resolution 18-74.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Marmee.
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. Is there any discussion on 18-74? Mr. Rath?
Mr. Rath? I can make a motion to amend 18-74.
Two.
Uh, after the third whereas, number one, I would like to add a number two. That reads 2019 Sleepy Hollow Ditch Project located between Donovan Drive and Randy Drive, west of Horns Hill Road, in cooperation with Newark Township. This is at the request of our engineer, Mr. Moorehead.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. 18-74A is in your packet. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, please call the roll vote.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
18-74 is amended to 18-74A. Any discussion on 18-74A? Seeing none, please call the roll vote.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
And Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
18-74A as amended, passes 10-0. Next on the first reading, we have 18-77.
Resolution 18-77 by Mr. Marmee, Mr. Cost, Mr. Rath, Mr. Labutus, and Mr. Frazier. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of a municipal corporation.
You've heard the first reading. Mr. Marmee?
Thank you, Mr. President. I make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule of Resolution 18-77.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule by Mr. Marmee.
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier, Mr. Marmee.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have, uh, some items here that we have to fund immediately, take over the fire trucks. So, need to...
Thank you, Mr. Marmee. On, please call the roll, waive the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
And Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Two-day reading rule is waived, Mr. Marmee.
Thank you, Mr. President. I make a motion to adopt Resolution 18-77.
Second.
Mr. Marmee, second by Mr. Labutus. Any discussion on 18-77? Seeing none, please call the roll vote.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
And Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
18-77 passes 10-0. And finally, on the first reading, we have 18-78.
Resolution 18-78 by Mr. Cost, Mr. Marmee, Mr. Rath, Mr. Labutus, and Mr. Frazier. A resolution appropriating monies for the current expenses of a municipal corporation.
Mr. President? Mr. Lang?
I'd like to make a motion to waive the two-day reading rule on Resolutions 18-78.
Motion to waive the two-day reading rule by Mr. Lang.
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier, Mr. Lang.
Yeah, this is the last piece of legislation, I believe, to, uh, secure the funds so that we can move forward with the purchase of the new fire truck.
Okay. On, please call the roll, waive the two-day reading rule.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
And Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Two-day reading rule is waived, Mr. Lang.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 18-78.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Lang.
Second.
Second by Mr. Frazier. Is there any discussion on 18-78? Seeing none, please call the roll vote.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
And Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
18-78 passes 10-0. And that concludes our legislation. See? Next on the agenda were our second opportunity for comments from citizens. Same rules apply. Do we have anyone else with a mic to speak? Imagine if you want to.
That woman that has this problem on Pearson?
Give me your name and address.
My name's John Sweeney, 727 Garfield Avenue. Put up all them speed bumps down through that street.
I hear you're warning. I hear you're pulling up everywhere. It stops.
Top on the snowplows. Anyone else?
Right. And we want the street blocked.
Anyone else like to speak? Okay. Anyone from the city? On the law director.
Mr. President, all right.
Did Clemson win on?
Oh, absolutely did.
Okay. And they're still, like, second in the thing, or they, or are they now? I forget.
The fifth week of the season, so that kind of...
This might be my only opportunity. Mayor Hall?
I could, by time of beginning, so I'll pass right now.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Rath?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to, uh, make a motion to take 18-16 off the table.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Rath, second by Mr. Frazier. On, please call the roll, take 18-16 off the table.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Upstate.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
And Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
18-16 is off the table. We've already had a motion to adopt that, correct?
That's correct.
Is there any discussion on 18-16?
Mr. President? I make a motion to amend 18-16 to add the equalization board's recommendation.
Second.
Motion to amend by Mr. Rath, second by Mr. Frazier. Is there any discussion on the amendment? On, please call the roll. Vote on the amendment.
As in?
To vote on the amendment.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Upstate.
Mr. Cost?
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
And Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
Is there any discussion on 18-16 as amended? Seeing none, please call a roll vote.
Mr. Rath?
Yes.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Bub?
Abstained.
Mr. Cos?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Fraser?
Yes.
Ms. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. Labutus?
Yes.
Mr. Lang?
Yes.
And Mr. Marmee?
Yes.
18-16 passes 941 extension. Mr. Rath?
Thank you. I had an opportunity, or we, Jen and I had an opportunity to volunteer at the Jailhouse Rock event this weekend at the Market Square to benefit the jail and the haunted house. That was a great event, it was incredibly well-attended. Whether you were there for the beer or the music or both, it was just a great event. We ended up having perfect weather for it, and would have probably been even better had there not been a football game going on towards the end of it. I think that it was, it was perfect. With that, I'll call a service committee meeting and pass.
Thank you, Mr. Rath. Mr. Blake?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank Mrs. Livingston for being us, you know, I know it's a hard issue that you're going through right now. You know, I do let Chad and his crew have been doing what they can, but we need to probably have some type of outside meeting to bring the people together so we can really have a conversation about the suggestions that you had sent, and then, so we'll try to get a meeting set up here soon to do that. So, but thank you for keeping to come back and making your voice heard, and, you know, you're advocating for what's going on, and you're right there. So, you know, I, I don't have an immediate solution for the situation, but hopefully we'll work together to find something. On that, I'll yield.
Thank you, Mr. Blake, Mr. Bub.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few items this evening. I wanted to congratulate all the Special Olympics winners. Very impressive and uplifting for certain. Chris, thanks for coming in. I share your concern with it as well.